Everyone, it is Monday, May 13th, 2024, and I'd like to call the City Council meeting to order. We'd like to begin by inviting Pastor Huey Hudson of Restoration Church Forward for the invocation.
Good evening, members of the council, and thank you so much again for the invite to come and pray with you tonight. May we pray. Dear heavenly Father, I thank you for this day. I thank you for the opportunity to gather and discuss the business of this city. But I pray for all the leaders of the city of Madison. I pray for our mayor, I pray for the city council. I pray, God, for our police department, for the men and women who serve us the way they do. I pray your protection upon them and you watch them and keep them safe. Lord, I also pray for those who serve in our fire departments. And I ask you, Lord God, to continue to be with them and watch over them and keep them safe as they perform their duties as well. Lord, I'm so grateful for the many leaders throughout this city. Lord, I also want to pray for the men and women who work in our public school systems. As the school year comes to an end, Lord, I just pray that this has been a great year, a banner year for the city of Madison. I pray that the students have learned and have grown and have developed in a way, God, that they should have. And I celebrate with those young people who are going to be graduating this year. And I pray for those that are going to be returning to the classroom, God, that you'll give them a great summer and keep them safe. Lord, I pray for this meeting tonight, for each civic group that's represented, for each person, God, who may have a role to play in this meeting. I actually lead and guide this council, these men and women. Guide their thoughts, their actions, and God help them come to a conclusion that best serve all that are involved. So, Lord Jesus, I worship you and I thank you for this place, for this city, for these people, God, who love Madison the way they do. And I ask you, Lord God, to just be with them tonight as they have this time of discussing. So, Lord, we bless you, we honor you, we praise you, in your mighty name I pray. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor.
I bless you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Go call, please. Mayor Finley?
Here.
Councilmember Robleski?
Here.
Councilmember Spears? Councilmember Powell? Councilmember Shaw?
Yes.
Council President Bartlet?
Yes.
Councilmember Dunzine?
Yes.
Councilmember Seifert?
Here.
Are there any amendments to the agenda?
We have no amendments.
Thank you. Next, we have approval of minutes number 2024-08-RG. Move to approve.
Second.
Motion second, any discussion? Ready for vote. Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Council President Bartlet?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell? Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert?
Aye.
And the motion passes. Next, we have minutes number 2024-05-WS.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Robleski, second by Seifert. Any discussion? Ready for vote. Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert?
Aye.
Council President Bartlet?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell? Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunzine?
Aye.
And the motion passes. Next, we have presentations and awards, and I'm going to switch the order for just a moment and begin with item D on the agenda with presentation of plaques to the winning students of Discovery Journey and Liberty Middle School and Mayor Scholarship Award.
Three students, just real quick, the Mayor's Award. The Mayor's Award was started under Mayor Kirby. I think it was in 2007 or 2008. And he kept it going ever since. And one of the things that he did that he loved at was having an area of specificity that they were the strongest beginning. And at least one of our folks tonight has one of those areas that three different winners will go and have them go where other middle schools, or not so many others. And let's go with this young grade two middle school, this is an eighth grade student. She's a teen, she's a girl, she doesn't come up here, please. Now, I'll start by giving you just a little bit about you. I don't know if you all work in an X grade. This young lady had this illness, and in this case, the student had food and meditation work at it. And last week, at study time, at night in the end, during her day at the Discovery Middle School, she pushed herself to the cell classroom. She took her time outside of school researching and working to solve challenges of the future by participating in various science-based competitions. And let me say a little bit about this. This year long, she took home six first-place awards at the Alabama Science Institute Fair in areas of innovation and medicine. For recent fall, however, being handed the Fisher Junior Innovators Challenge, a top-tier competition of the science field. I don't feel like 1800 is difficult to even pass. If you guys don't know math, you're a bit of a mess. But along with that, the project and research facilities to improve standard communication, beginning collaboration. The research is presented to these competitions now at the Academy. It's a national award. So, our 2023-24 Mayor's Award.
Oh, yeah. Next is Journey Middle School, and it's Riley Metters. And she is our first participant, not participant winner, at Journey, obviously. And each time, not only do they get the individual plaque, but there's a plaque that hangs at every one of the middle schools that has their name on it each year. So, Riley, in this case, focused on mathematics. Quiet young lady, but behind the shy demeanor is an extremely passionate and accomplished in the area of mathematics. She successfully competed in several competitions, placing second and eighth overall in the various individual categories. Her most outstanding accomplishment was her scores in the National Math Counts exam, which allowed her to compete at the next level as an individual, going against other schools who have been around for more than 20 years. Her scores were one of the main factors that allowed the JMS Math Counts team to finish in third place overall for the Math Counts Huntsville Masson County Chapter for the test. She not only succeeds in areas of mathematics, but all subjects, maintains straight A's and has been a star at Journey Middle School. And so, in this case, our 2023-24 Mayor's Award for Scholastic Excellence is Riley Metters. And then, we're always proud to be included in everything that St. John's does. And then, we are blessed to have them as a participant in this also. And in this case, the winner from St. John's Catholic School is Gianna King. We're going to read about you, too. So, in this case, I like how it's not just math. In her case, it's accelerated math. Through hard work, organization, attention to detail, and positive learning attitude, she has maintained an outstanding average, as well as earning the All-A Honor Roll for the year. She was inducted into the National Junior Honor Society in sixth grade and currently serves as secretary. She's an example of pride stewardship for St. John's School and church community. She's mature, as well composed, and reliable to help others outside of the classroom and provides her fellow students with an excellent example of Christian ideas taught to St. John's. And so, our 2023-24 Mayor's Award for Scholastic Excellence is Gianna King.
So, our next presentation will be for the graduation of the Civic Awareness Academy. Mayor Finley and City Council members, it's my honor to introduce the graduates of our inaugural Civic Awareness Academy. Over the past six weeks, these dedicated individuals have learned from you, our department heads, and each other, equipping themselves with the skills and knowledge necessary to actively participate in local governance. They have shown a commitment to making a difference in our city. Their graduation today is a testament to the power of civic engagement and the importance of citizen involvement in shaping our city's future. Please join me in congratulating this academy class and welcoming them as valued members of our civic community. You guys ready? All right, Tara Bailey. Hey there, Brent Bolender. Ryan Brown. Sondra Brown. James Chamberlain. Erin Clangerman. Pat Freel. Billy Goodson. Ryan Goodwin. Elder Kruger. Greg McCormick. Crystal McBreyer. Lisa Smith. Patricia Soska. Kristen Strickland. De'lin Volkle. Mark Zessinger. And that's all of our Civic Awareness Academy for this year. Thank you.
So, two things real quickly. This was the first class, and we learned a lot from this class. But Tracy Gillespie put in an enormous amount of time and effort into this. So, with class, I know you guys want to thank Tracy for all the she's done. And one of the things that, you know, there's a lot of stuff that came out of this because we weren't always trying to push information out. We were trying to stop up information also. And one of the things that we just talked about, and Renee and I are going to make happen, is a town hall. I think one of the best ideas that came out of that is, hey, we want to kind of, now that we know more, we're going to pay more attention to what's going on, and we kind of like to voice our opinion a little bit on where your money's going to be, our money's going to be spent. So, we're going to set up a town hall sometime in late June that gives us the chance, as a group, to listen to the community, tell us what you think and where you think the money should go. And in turn, it then starts the budget process in July and keeps things going from there. It's just one of the ideas, but one of the things that this communication will help. There'll be a class in the fall. Thank you again for everybody's participation and your time. It's meant a lot to us. All right, so.
Okay. The next is a proclamation designating the week of May 19th to the 25th as National Public Works Week.
And as our Director of Public Works, Kent Smith, comes up for this, I'll read this. And the first part of it is, "Public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of the city of Madison, Alabama." There's five more whereas's there, but it won't do any more than me letting you guys know. This is the glue of the city right here. Those guys, police fire, they have uniforms, and they keep us safe. They do a phenomenal job. But when it comes to the day-to-day activities that are behind the scenes that make a difference, with all this rain that we're having, where all of us have been enjoying sunshine and spring, they've been in ditches making sure they clean them out with snakes. They do incredible things, and I truly, and Kent knows this, we truly appreciate our public works team. And we're thrilled to be able to say this proclamation declares May 19th to the 25th as National Public Works Week in the city of Madison. Kent, thank to you and your entire team.
Okay. And our final proclamation declares the month of May 2024 as Water Safety Month.
And this is an entire month. Drowning is the single leading cause of death for children ages one to four and the second leading cause of injury-related death for children age four, up to age 14. And it's an aquatic-related injury, and it's preventable. So, what they talk about here is evidence-based strategies like the National Drowning Prevention Alliance's Five Layers of Protection, which includes using barriers and alarms, constant adult water supervision, adults and children learning basic swim and water competency skills, use of life jackets abound around open bodies of water, and emergency preparation with CPR with rescue breaths. We'll engage our community in water safety for all ages. So, I, Paul Finley, Mayor of the city of Madison, declare May 2024 as Water Safety Month in the city of Madison. And I'm very appreciative of you guys leading the charge. You're more than welcome to.
Sure.
I just knew Kent didn't want to, so.
We are a two-year-old company, North Alabama Swim Schools. We operate out of the wellness centers in both Jones Valley in Huntsville and Madison Wellness Center. Our mission is to not only educate families on the risk of drowning, but also to train swimmers as young as four months and as old as 80 years old how to learn water competency. We're building two facilities, and we do business under the brand Safe Splash Swim Labs. And we're really excited to have the support of Madison City. And we look forward to educating our community members on how to prevent a very, very severe type of way to drown. Every year, 10 bus full, school buses of children lose their life through drowning. And we want to spread awareness and educate our community members. Thank you.
Well, outstanding presentations, Mayor. These were wonderful, and thank you all for being here this evening for those. Next, we have public comments. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. Please state your name and the district where you reside when you begin speaking. We will start with comment cards that have been turned in, and the first one is Rachel Homelack.
First of all, how unfair.
Could you state your district that you reside?
Rachel Homelack, District Four.
Thank you.
I'll start with saying how unfair it is that I have to go after all of those wonderful presentations and acknowledgements and that we still have kids in our audience. So, this is a disservice to Madison City. Okay? Obviously. Obviously, I'm not going to read from this book, but I'll let everybody in the know, all parents in the audience, please know that our libraries contain porn in the kids' section and sexually obscene graphics that you need to be aware of and that you should join me in fighting having these in our libraries that the, that we, the taxpayer, pay for. So make sure you're aware that this is all over the library. So, I don't understand. I'm still here. I'm still showing up. We're still talking about this. Obviously, I'm not going to read the sexually explicit stuff because I know you guys will just cut me off. Why? Well, because it's obscene and inappropriate, but for some reason, we still feel that it should be in our children's section of our libraries and that kids should have unfettered access to it, correct? All right. Well, another thing, it's not just the sexually obscene crap, but it's also misinformation, like talking about STIs. In this book, let's talk about it. It says here, it turns out the majority of STIs are treatable and it's no biggie. There are some that are untreatable, like HPV and herpes, which the majority of people have, even though they're symptomless. But even those aren't worth fretting over beyond keeping some good practices. Are you freaking kidding me right now? Are we going to tell teens that STIs are no biggie? My friend is a retired OB-GYN nurse and she could not believe that this page is in this book, in the teen section for kids 12 to 18 years old. Guys, come on, do better. You're going to see me over and over again. We're not stopping. Okay? We're not going to stop until we get this perverse material out of the hands of our children. This is not a gay issue. This is not a heterosexual issue. This is a sexualizing our children issue. They deserve better. We need to be their voice. Children cannot consent to this.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the council? Please come forward, state your name and the district where you reside.
Senator Crowe, Ashley State, District Five, Council President. What is the purpose of the ordinance number 2024-137, repealing and replacing Chapter 18, Article 1, Section 3 of the City Code? Are we just allowing sparklers now? Are we going to allow bottle rockets? We can't even keep these kids or adults from setting off firefighters and fireworks as it is now. Please do not loosen up the law against residents doing their own fireworks shows. Please define novelty. I hope novelty is describing anything silent. Also, these fireworks are, really, it's a health and safety if you've got everybody in the neighborhood setting them off. Under Police Resolution 2024-121R, the electronic device detection and therapy canine. I'm not sure what this transaction is being, why is it being done through a nonprofit? It may not be the best possible option since Operation Underground Rescue does not have the highest success rate. I don't know if they've had any success for rescues according to the Wikipedia. I don't know, I'm not an expert about this, but this organization may not be as professional as our current canine units are. Can we please, please get clarification as to whether canine is paid for by donation and why we haven't, have to have an ongoing agreement with, I guess you have a mutual agreement with a nonprofit. Resolution says the city will pay for an additional 920 annually. And to this, was it Operation Underground Railroad to lodge and care for the canine? Also, why can't the city just go through the Jordan Detection then and bypass nonprofit and skip making the donation annually altogether? And also, I want to make one more request. Please put the speed tables back on high line. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Coe. Is there anyone else who would like to address the council?
Margie Daly, District Six. Okay, so I just wanted to congratulate the taxpayers and all the voters that came out to vote against the city manager dictatorship government that they wanted to change to. It's been one year and I'm grateful that at least we're seeing more of the transparency of where our dollars are going, that we did not get the dictatorship government. I would say that most of our current population moved here to get away from overtaxed, overregulated governments, and they will soon see how you have nickel and dimed the taxpayers. I feel incompetency as fiduciaries for our tax dollars. You have created the largest debt for the future generations to come in Madison City, the highest bonds, the most fees, taxes, franchise fees, added incrementally for years. You increased water, sewage, trash, and garbage fees. I mean, you have, we will see in the future, and I think a lot of people will realize what you've done with the internet tax and the incremental 1% to 5% on trash, on water, on sewage, on cable, on podcasts, and everything else that you added, these little taxes. And where is our money going? The baseball. Health and safety has gone out the window. Now, I'd also like to comment, I can only imagine from Freedom of Information, I found out that my application was the only one denied to the Civic Academy. So my conclusion can only be that I'm too informed and too civically engaged that I didn't need the academy because to only isolate one application out of 34 is really a violation of my civil rights. I also put some questions up. It's about the MVP and did they get 9.6% of that $500,000 that was state tax dollars donated to the county and then the county commission then donated it to the City of Madison? Did they receive 9.6% of that half a million dollars? Repealing the fireworks is ridiculous. You didn't even show us, I mean, what we're allowed, now you're going to allow in the city. They don't even abide by the ordinance we have now and you're going to get rid of that and allow more fireworks. It just doesn't make any common sense. Now, about this working dog, I'm pretty confused.
Thank you, Ms. Daly. Your time is up. Is there anyone else who would like to address the council? Please come forward. Seeing none, we will close public comments and move on to the Consent Agenda and Finance Committee report.
Yes, the Finance Committee has reviewed the regular and periodic bills. Also, on the consent agenda, we have several entrance claims and we have an authority for soliciting bids on Berger and Brown's Ferry for the Roundabout, the Brown's Ferry culvert replacement, the Mill Road ditch stabilization, two pedestrian bridges for Palmer Park, pedestrian function improvements at Glisby and Hughes, and bids for the renovation of the public safety annex. With that, I move to approve.
Motion second. Any discussion or questions? We're ready for a vote. He seconded.
And Councilmember Spears.
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw.
Aye.
Council President Bartlet.
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski.
Aye.
Councilmember Powell. Councilmember Denzine.
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert.
Aye.
Motion passes. Presentations or reports, beginning with Mayor Finley.
All right, well, I'll do the first three. Let me go ahead and answer Ms. Daly's questions first. Did they receive anything from the $500,000? The answer is no. They will not get anything from the county commission that they gave or the state. No. Yeah. As far as your second thing, as far as being the only one not selected, I will say this, that we started, if we needed to, with references. None of your three references supported you being in that class. That's, I'm one of them and that is correct. So that leads you to number two, which is part of what we have tried to do is work with you on your different social media channels to get the right information to you, but you've blocked every one of the people in the city that you don't like that would give you information that's tried to get on there. So that doesn't help us as we try to get information out. And then thirdly, I do not appreciate, as someone who used as a reference, the way you treat our city attorney, period. Whether you agree with him or disagree with him, it's unprofessional and wrong. You do whatever you want to do, but if you're going to use me as a reference, I would talk to me first about whether I would recommend you for that class, but I won't. Okay. Next, something really positive that happened today was we unveiled two murals and it was really exciting to see that downtown. It certainly spruces that up. It's neat that one of them is so educational, informative, that our school kids can learn. I literally had people walk up, I didn't know that, as adults. You know, I can imagine what, you know, going bringing kids there. And the other one, from a butterfly standpoint, was just so neat to see how the maturation of that directly talks, matches what we as a city are looking to do. So congratulations to the mural committee, to everyone who got that going, and we hope that there's more coming down the road. One of the neat things that happened at Governor Ivey's presentation to the chamber today is she verified that the 565 six-laning funding is moving forward to get bid and the state will take care of that. So that will finalize the six-laning of 565, which in turn will help congestion in the City of Madison once we get the flyovers and once we get six-laning all the way through. I think it'll make a big difference with getting people from Huntsville and Research Park, Redstone Arsenal, into the City of Madison again. And then lastly, Tracy, thank you for everything that you did, civic awareness. It really was something. And council, when I say a thank you to her, I thank you guys. That was one of the biggest things that we looked to do was to fund that position to have a better interaction with our community. Secondly, Tracy has managed our relationship with our lobbyists down in Montgomery. And while we are waiting for a signature from the governor to finalize the budget, when that happens, I think we've got some good news that she worked on, that we all worked on with that budget and we'll probably have that at the next meeting. So with that said, that's all I have.
Thank you. District One.
Yes, ma'am. The first item I have for consideration is Resolution Number 2024-146-R, which is approving the expenditure of council special project funds for the purchase of a vehicle advanced warning flasher for project number 24-17 on Balt Road at Chapel Hill entrance for the Engineering Department not to exceed $10,000. And this is a project that I asked Michael Johnson, our Engineering Department head, to meet me with out, at that area, there's a blind hill about 40 yards south of the intersection and this apparatus would be very similar to what we have at the end of Pension Row and Palmer, or there's also one, I believe, at Chadrick and Eastview. So it basically warns people that there is a car coming because right now you cannot see if a car is coming. And as we were talking, Chief Bailey joined us and he concurred that it would be a good safety feature. So for, with that, I move to approve and then I'm happy to answer any questions.
Motion second. Any questions about the project? Seeing none, I think we're ready for a vote.
Councilmember Robleski.
Aye.
Councilmember Spears.
Aye.
Council President Bartlet.
Aye.
Councilmember Powell.
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw.
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine.
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert.
Aye.
Motion passes. Anything else?
Thank you all. Yeah, I just, so this has been on my mind and in my heart for quite some time and I've done some research with regard to the topic that Mrs. Homolak has talked about. And so I reached out to the National Child Advocacy Center and I said, this is an issue not just in Madison, not just in Alabama, nationwide, it could be worldwide. What is the best course of action? What should we do as parents? And Chris Newland and I, the executive director of NCAC, and I had a talk and we, and we agreed that how I parent my children is going to be different on how you parent and how you parent and things like that. And like I said, it's very difficult. Perception is in the eye of the beholder. In my view, this isn't really city council's lane to decide either what books should be in the library or where those books should be in the library. I didn't go to school for that. It's the public library. There's a very good program in place that if you have a child that brings home a book from the public library, this is separate from a school issue. The school issue, they handle their library, but if your child were to go to the public library and there was a book that you were concerned about, there's a process in place where you can report that book and it's evaluated. And so, Ms. Homolak and anyone is welcome to come. I mean, anyone is welcome to come and speak to us with the concern you have for what's going on in Madison. But I will say again, I don't believe this is our lane. What might be right for my child may not be right for your child. I'm happy to send you this presentation from an extremely well-respected nationwide awareness of the NCAC that is so well-respected. And this shows how you can discuss these subjects and discuss them as a family. And I believe this is a parental issue. And I'm not speaking for anyone else up here. This is just how Mara feels. Come, I'm listening to you, but this is how I feel, that it's a public library and it's not our purview to decide what the library should do. And really, that's all I have. As Forrest Gump would say, what was it he would say? And that's all I've got to say about that. So that's where I am.
Thank you. District Two. I hear District Four.
The only thing I have to say is Bob Jones is playing in the state baseball playoff tomorrow and Wednesday. So the Final Four, Bob Jones and James Clemens play to go to state. So I think it's pretty neat out of the, out of the final finalists, two of them are right here in our hometown. So anyway, we'll be watching the Bob Jones hopefully bring home the state championship Wednesday afternoon. All right.
District Six.
I would just like to thank Public Works, the Police Department, the Fire Department for watching over us during the terrible storms this last week. Appreciate all the work they did to clean up our streets and to keep us safe. Also, I really want to congratulate the students of Bob Jones that put together Madfest. I don't know, I was there by 11 o'clock and there was over 2,000 people that had already been there. It was a huge success and the students did it all on their own. They worked really hard and they pulled it together at six weeks, a month at the most, and they were able to do so much. And it was a great opportunity for so many of our families to get together, to enjoy the, it was, it was like high school kids that were selling the things that they had handmade. And it was just wonderful to see them do it. It was just like a mini street festival, but it was just done so well and I just wanted to congratulate them for that really excellent festival they put on for our city people. And that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
District Seven.
None in business tonight.
I just have one comment to congratulate the graduates in the class of 2024. Madison City Schools will have, celebrate its graduation ceremonies next Monday and we're so excited to be there to attend that and that's always a highlight. And well, I guess I have two comments and congratulations to the graduates of the Civic Awareness Academy and thank you all for staying for the rest of the meeting. You get to see what's real after what they told you. Okay. We do not have any board or committee appointments or a public hearing, so we will move to the
I have a few items tonight. First is Resolution Number 2024-126R, authorizing a professional services agreement with Morel Engineering for CE and I work on Project 22002. That's the Madison Boulevard resurfacing and signalization not to exceed $294,229.25 to be paid in Fund 38.
Motion second.
Motion second. Any questions? Seeing none, we're ready for a vote.
Councilmember Shaw.
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert.
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski.
Aye.
Councilmember Spears.
Aye.
Councilmember Powell. Council President Bartlet.
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine.
Aye.
Aye.
And the motion passes.
Okay. Next, I have Resolution Number 2024-131-R. This is acceptance of Madison Branch Phase One into the city of Madison maintenance program.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and second. Any questions?
Has everything been met that we, they signed up to do?
Yes, sir.
Ready for vote.
Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Seaford?
Aye.
Council President Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell? I'm sorry, Kenny. Councilmember Powell? Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next.
All right. Next, I have Resolution Number 2024-132-R. This is authorizing an agreement with Nivens and Associates Appraisals for project number 22038, the Spurgreen Road and Hardeman Road traffic signal, not to exceed $3,200 to be paid from the engineering department budget. This is the location of the two tracks that we're going to try to acquire for that, for the new signal poles. Hardeman Road, the two intersections, Hardeman Road, Spurgreen Road.
Move to approve. Second.
Okay. Motion and second. Any questions? Ready for vote.
Councilmember Roblesky?
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Council President Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell? Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seaford?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Next, I have Resolution Number 2024-136-R, authorizing a public works contract with Euratech USA for void fill and stabilization on project 24003 Spencer Green Settlement. This is the solution determined by our geotech consultant last year in the amount not to exceed $88,500 to be paid from the engineering department budget.
Move to approve. All right.
Motion and second. Any questions? Ready for vote.
So over the course of maybe the last eight or 10 years, I think, I don't know the whole background on it, but that road, Spencer Green Road, sort of been crumbling underneath, and they've gone through three or four times, I think, dug it up, trying to do different possible solutions. They dug it up, filled it back with rock. It's still settled down. They've dug it up and put... Yeah, so this is, most recent attempt was a foam injection system that was, this was a lot more robust foam injective system that's water-resistant, going to create a lattice, and got a whole grid laid out.
Okay, thank you. Okay, ready for vote.
Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Seaford?
Aye.
Council President Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Councilmember Denzine? Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, and these next three are right-of-way acquisitions. So item E is Resolution Number 2024-138-R, authorizing an agreement with Triple Springs LLC for right-of-way easement acquisitions for the Brownsperry, Huntsville-Brownsperry-Spurgreen Road Roundabout, $108,647.
Move to approve. Motion and second. Any questions? Ready for vote.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Council President Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell? Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seaford?
Aye.
Motion passes.
All right. Next is Resolution Number 2024-139-R, authorizing an agreement with PR Spurgreen LLC for right-of-way easement acquisitions for that same project, $77,720.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay. Motion and second. Any questions? Ready for vote.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Council President Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell? Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seaford?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next.
All right, and finally, it's Resolution Number 2024-149-R, authorizing an agreement with Fairland LLC for right-of-way easement acquisition for that same project, $104,181.
Motion and second. Any questions?
Just one question. So when do you think is like the start date for construction? When can you get the word out?
Well, with, with these agreements in place, when we get these paid out, we should be, we've got our, on the consent agenda today, open to start the bidding process.
Right.
So we'll start that, I believe, well, we'll advertise the bid next week, I believe, and then we'll probably hope to open the bid in June, award the bids in, and then they can get started as soon as they can possibly get them started.
Okay.
So the plan is still...
About school traffic?
Yeah, I mean, it's going to be, it's going to be, it's going to be a traffic problem. Yeah, it's, it's not going to be a great traffic situation.
So starting July, August-ish, and finishing October, November-ish?
Starting June, July.
I'd say if we can start it in July, we'll be doing it really, really good.
And it'll take probably like four months?
Depending on weather, it'll take four, six months depending on...
Okay. Thank you.
I think he said last May, he's not taking a Snickers bar bet on that one like previous city engineers, so on schedule. Okay, question for you on item D. Well, we haven't voted on this yet, have we?
Which one do you...
I'm going to wait, I'm going to wait until we're ready to go back and ask.
Okay, that'll be fine. You can...
Sorry. Which one? I'm sorry.
I'll come back to you.
We're going to get that in a minute. We're going to stay on this issue right here. So any other questions on this one?
Is this the end of the easements that we'll be paying for?
This is, right, so there were four tracks. There's also an agreement that we need to work out with MU, but this should be, this is all the right-of-way acquisitions for this, from individual property owners, yes.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, ready for vote.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Council President Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell? Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seaford?
Aye.
Motion passes. John, you have a question now?
I had, yeah, I had a question on item D, and I just wasn't as, as quick as I should be. So the issue you were talking about in Spencer Green, I know there are several other neighborhoods around, at least that area, that have experienced some of that same issue. Is there any data or any information that we can take from putting that, you know, new foam with lattice work or whatever in it that we can use in Asher Tannen? Will that work in some of these other areas?
For sure, for sure. There, I'm definitely aware of some areas, particularly Westchester Road. They've got some major sinking and settling issues over there. It has to do with the water table and where they built the roads and that kind of a thing. You know, how those roads were prepped for construction. But, you know, this is, this is sort of a, this is sort of a, let's give this a try. And this might be something that we can come back to, you know, later. This combined with the geotech and try to get it right this time, so we're not doing... I just, I don't like touching things more than once if we can help it, so...
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, let's be good at, I tell my son, let's be good at being lazy, just do what you want.
Yep.
I have a Chatham Circle, and my district has that issue. Are you aware of that? Can I maybe email you just to...
Absolutely. Any of those that you guys have, you can email me. You know, some of them might be, some of them might be a separate issue with some of the utility. I mean, it's hard to, you know, the surface, the way it looks, it's kind of the, the result looks the same, but sometimes there are different causes.
Right.
So, you know, we'll just have to see what's appropriate, you know, where, and do some exploratory, you know, drilling, and we'll figure it out.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Fire.
Evening. Requesting approval for proposed ordinance number 2024-137, amending section 18-3 of the Madison City Code to allow novelty and sparkler devices. And again, this is the first reading. So I can explain that now if you'd like, or wait till later, okay. So, you know, a lot of research on this I was not for to begin with, obviously. You know, our current ordinance states that we don't have any fireworks, but as stated before, we do. And came to find out, after a lot of research, many localities have gone to this ordinance, changed it to allow for these novelty types. And I've got a, a, a record of what that means. Basically, what this would allow is sparklers, smoke devices, novelties such as poppers, some ground sparkling devices that stay on the ground, and then some ground-based sparklers. And so nothing flies. There's no aerials that's allowed. In fact, this shows what's not allowed. And what the other localities that have been doing this for a few years, including Huntsville, and I've got a letter from the Huntsville Fire Marshal supporting this, is that you put these, and the only places these are sold is like BJ's, Kroger's, and we've talked a lot about maintaining small quantities in that structure, in the, where they're sold, and not having a bunch in the back room, having none in the back room. So we're very confident, you know, that this is going to be controlled very well, not present a fire hazard that would overload a sprinkler system, as an example, if there was a fire in the building. And also, the big benefit to it is that what they have found in other localities is that this gives the citizens something to go buy and something to have at their homes that is very small and very low hazard for the, for the children, et cetera, and very low hazard for causing fires, because there's nothing that flies around anywhere. So they've actually found a great reduction over the years so that people that have been using this as far as injuries and fires that occur. And I've been to many fireworks, generated fires. And so the localities that we did a lot of research with, including Huntsville again, have found that this is a great benefit because it limits, it really brings a high hazard things that you see routinely. And many of the families will buy this instead, which brings it to a lot lower hazard. Not that it's going to stop it altogether, you know, what we've got altogether, because people will still be able to go buy, if they don't like this, they'll be able to go buy elsewhere.
Can you answer the question about noise?
Yeah, that, again, because they don't fly, I don't, I have not seen... I've seen these in operation. I don't believe these are big noise generators like the other ones. Really didn't talk about that. I really didn't investigate noise. But because they don't fly and explode up in the air, I'm anticipating that they will be a lot less. My dog will be a lot happier. People use these instead of, instead of what they're usually using. Yeah, there is a little bit of more localized noise than whole-community noise. I'm anticipating, but I did not research that.
If I could just interject, I think I can answer that question. When it gets to like the ground spinners, things like that, that is prohibited. We basically have adopted the state definition for what is a novelty, and everything is basically not going to be a noise generator, and it's all going to be confined to the ground.
And again, this is just the first reading. Thank you all.
We'll get feedback on that.
Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you. Human resources.
Good evening. I have one resolution for your consideration this evening. This is Resolution Number 2024-144-R to authorize changes to the job classification plan. And the purpose of this resolution is to provide for updates to the management structure of the Parks and Recreation Department, given all of the growth in facilities and population and programs that they've been managing over the years. Earlier this evening, the HR committee met and approved this plan to go forward to council, and I'm pleased to present it to you this evening, and Cory and I are both on hand for questions. I'll start by summarizing the organizational chart that you see up on the screen. And this chart describes the new management structure that we're proposing. First of all, starting at the top, we have our director, and then one level down, we have our assistant director. And then a level down from that, we have our mid-level managers. Currently, we have two of these. They're both at a grade 12. We have an aquatics director and a senior center director. And then we're proposing three new ones. And they're all kind of updated versions of things that we currently have, but they're just reworked a little bit to help that these people and Cory manage the department. So first of all, we have an administrative superintendent position that is proposed at a grade 12. This will be a reorganization of the current role that the administrative supervisor is in. And this person will be charged with helping with the management of the new Madison Community Center, as well as special events at all fields and facilities of the department. This person will supervise administrative staff, including receptionists, program coordinators, the van program, and also recreation aides and other temporary and seasonal staff. Then next, we have an operations superintendent, also proposed for a grade 12. And this is an updated version of a job that's currently on the books. This position's focus will be all of the grounds and park maintenance for the Recreation Department. And this person will supervise all the fields and park maintenance staff, as well as recades that are assigned to those tasks from time to time. We also are proposing a new program superintendent job. This is an update for the program director job, and this was established at a grade 12, and we're asking that we continue the grade 12 position. And this person will supervise all of the athletic recreation programs that the city offers, both for adult and youth sports. And this person also will, you know, manage summer camp. And this person will supervise program coordinators, recreation aides, and camp counselors. In addition to the management structure, we're proposing a receptionist job at a grade eight. And this receptionist will be stationed at the community center and will monitor the flow of traffic, foot traffic and communication at the community center. And with that, we'll be glad to take any questions that you have.
Motion and second first?
Move to approve. Second.
Motion and second. Questions?
I did attend the meeting earlier with HR, even though I'm not a member. I appreciate you and Cory going over this in detail and explaining exactly what is happening. And I'd also like to remind people that we are having a work session next Wednesday night on the 22nd, that it's going to go over all the different departments. So it's not just this one that's getting a lot of changes. It's going to be all the departments. And I just welcome, ask all the people to come and listen to that, too. But thank you for all your help earlier. Thank you.
Any other questions? And I think we're ready for vote.
Councilmember Roblesky?
Aye.
Councilmember Seaford?
Aye.
Council President Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell? Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, Megan.
Thank you.
Legal.
Evening. I have three items for reconsideration tonight. First would be proposed ordinance number 2024-119. This is to repeal ordinance number 2019-9, the current schedule for trash and garbage rates. This is just the first reading. But the reason that we're doing this is the ordinance that we have in 2019 attempted to establish kind of a forecast for nine years as far as water trash rates would be. And unfortunately, it just isn't correct anymore. So what we're doing is repealing it, replacing it with what we have set at the current rate. And our plan is to have a yearly ordinance to set it here going forward. So this is just the first reading.
Okay.
Next up, we have Resolution Number 2024-118-R, authorizing an amendment to the billing services agreement with Athens Utilities. We've, this is the very same agreement that we had with Athens Utilities previously. We've just changed where we, we were having Athens Utilities pay the city of Madison directly for some of the billing services. But now we've removed the middleman, and they're basically paying us directly. So that's the only change we made to the agreement. Everything else as far as rates remains the same.
Is there a motion and second?
Move to approve. Second.
Motion and second. Any questions? Ready for vote.
Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Seaford?
Aye.
Council President Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell? Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Motion passes, thanks.
Next up, proposed ordinance, um, number twenty-two-four dash zero-six-one, this is authorizing the acceptance of Ludi Richards Drive, which is currently a private road, to be dedicated as a public road to the city, uh, if you look at the diagram that we have up here, Ludi Richards Road, as it's named, is the, uh, the drive that goes right in front of the Public Safety Annex, uh, we have requested that Integra properties dedicate that to the city, so that we can remodel the top of that, as you can see where you've got the little islands and it's flared out, uh, that's not going to, uh, fully accommodate what we want as far as the fire station once, uh, it's finished and up and running, so we anticipate that there's gonna have to be some, um, some, some changes to that portion, and, uh, they have been willing to dedicate the road. The first reading of this was, uh, on April twenty-second, and it is, uh, tonight that y'all would vote on this.
Move to approve.
Second. Motion second, any questions? Ready for vote.
Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Council President Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell? Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seaford?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. And police.
Good evening, here for, uh, resolution number twenty-two-four-one twenty-one R, this is authorizing an agreement with Operation Underground Railroad for an electronic storage device canine, uh, acquisition, for those of you unfamiliar with Operation Underground Railroad, if you've seen the movie Sound of Freedom that came out within the last couple of years, this is the, the group that, uh, rescues, uh, young girls out of sex trafficking, uh, and works against sexual exploitation, especially online, um, they've entered into an agreement with, uh, another group out of Indiana that trains dogs to actually sniff out electronic storage devices, uh, your flash drives, uh, hard drives and things like that, and, uh, the, as you know, they, they are very easily hidden, and then can be destroyed after we serve search warrants, now, unfortunately, our area seems to have an awful lot of people who commit internet, uh, crimes, uh, we've had several search warrants that were served just this past year in our area, uh, and several arrests made of people who were, um, trafficking in child pornography, one of them so severe, they brought the FBI's, who passed this rescue team out of DC just to serve the search warrant here in Madison, that was pretty disturbing. But, uh, what this does is allows us to have a capability we did not have before, and, uh, we had a family here in Madison who chooses to remain anonymous, that donated the cost, uh, to Operation Underground Railroad to pay for the dogs, so we would have that capability here in the northern Alabama area, I do have, uh, detective, um, Ted, do you wanna come up here and explain a little bit? Ted Teale, he's with the Madison Police Department, who currently serves on the FBI's, uh, what's it, regional crime forensics lab.
Good evening, American land councilmembers, I appreciate your time this evening, um, as Chief Candy was just mentioning, I work with, uh, the FBI Task Force, we do computer forensics for the city of Madison, as well as, uh, the county, the city of Huntsville, as we support the digital forensics, and we also support, uh, search warrants, um, Operation Underground Railroad that, uh, facilitates the donations, as well as training, a lot of these dogs approached us after the Madison family had, uh, made a generous donation to them, um, this donation is not just for the canine itself, which can be very expensive, uh, to include the training, um, as well as the equipment, um, as well as travel, um, so their purpose in it is to do whatever they can to help in, um, in our fight against child exploitation, as well as, uh, sex trafficking, and so, uh, this organization's been doing this for many years, and has gotten, um, very skilled and professional at, um, the needs of what, uh, is needed for these dogs, it's a, it's a new resource, um, that we're very, uh, excited to potentially have in our community to be able to use in this, it's a little bit different than a traditional police canine, uh, these dogs come, uh, from, uh, support organizations that, um, typically a Labrador Retriever, um, different than what you would normally think of with the police dog, but they're, uh, trained as, uh, therapy comfort dogs, uh, facility dogs that assist those with special needs, and then this is added on as a, a special skill, um, so, uh, so this is actually a dog in the community that a child could pet and interact with, um, many of them have patches, they say pre-hugs, um, so, we're very thankful for that part of it, but the most important part for us, uh, in our difficult mission, is trying to do whatever we can for the children, um, that are out there, that may be images that we come across, that may give us evidence to help rescue them, and, uh, these dogs are a sumас part of that, to help us in that resource.
Move to approve.
Second. Motion in a second, any other questions?
I just wanna publicly thank the family for this tremendous donation.
Absolutely.
Yes, thank you to them, and thank you for bringing this to our community.
Well, you know, a- again, um, we look for unique ways to supplement our, our budget that doesn't go to the taxpayer, and whenever we get a donation like this, we jump on it, and this was a, a blessing, I believe this will be the fourth such dog in the state of Alabama, many states only have one, most of them don't have any, and, uh, we'll have that capability right here in this area to be able to fight this, uh, what I think is a scourge when we look at the numbers.
Fabulous.
Absolutely, okay, thank you. All right, I think we're ready for vote.
Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Council President Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell? Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Seaford?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you. And do we have any miscellaneous announcements? I think Karen did mention our work session next Wednesday.
Mm-hmm.
Five o'clock, five-thirty, what time? Five-thirty, five-thirty. Okay.
Motion to adjourn.
All right, we are adjourned, thank you.
Make this happen, and giving us, again, forty more acres to utilize as a city in something that we all can enjoy, we've transitioned over to Limestone County, and recently, count, council approved the McKinley Homes Project, it's a hundred-acre project that will have about three-hundred-and-fifty units for sale of all different kinds, what it also will have is thirty-three thousand square feet of commercial and retail space directly on Browns Ferry, but most exciting for Madison residents, especially on the western side, we secured twenty-five acres of green space that they will donate to the city, so each time that Madison grows, we wanna do it in a smart, controlled way, and in a way that benefits our city, in adding homes of quality, retail and commercial space, and in this case, park space. So, we're back from Limestone County, here in Madison County, as a matter of fact, we're back in Town Madison, we're on the Hexagon Campus, a great partner with the city of Madison, formerly Integra, kind of where Madison grew up, but this campus currently has eleven-hundred employees, and they have worked with the city of Madison on something that we're so excited to be able to share with you today. As our community continues to grow, we're investing in the critical infrastructure and services that we need to prepare us for the future, and a lot of that future has to do with public safety, and the need that we have for an additional fire station and a police presence here on the south side in the Town Madison area, a fire station four and a police substation here in Town Madison closer to where it's needed, a parking lot that gives us additional support for the venue when overflow parking is needed, it adds field space for our adult programs in both soccer, softball, and baseball, pickleball continues to grow by leaps and bounds, and this property will allow us to build an entire complex here for tournaments, and also for our citizens to use on a daily basis. And then Hexagon was nice enough to allow us to use their gym for our recreational programs, and continued to allow employees to utilize their gym facilities, what a great partner in Hexagon, what a wonderful project for our community, so how exciting, four projects, over one hundred acres, that Madison residents and our community will be able to utilize, tied together directly with what our community continues to ask for, give us more green space, more connectivity, more ability to enjoy our quality of life and recreational activities, and most importantly, continue to keep us safe, all of these are exciting projects that I'm proud to have worked with, as we talked about, we're not just standing still on rankings that are wonderful, we're continuing to work hard for our community and doing it together as a team. It's great to have high rankings, both nationally and at a state level, but what we truly have is an incredibly positive quality of life, one that has lots of activities to do, great restaurants to go to, a ton of diversity as people continue to move in here from different places, it's a unique city that continues to grow on all of us.
Diversity is key to the success of Madison, we have so many people from so many different countries and continents and cultures, I think there are over a hundred languages spoken in our school system, and I think the great thing about the diversity of Madison is the information and the difference of, of opinions and cultures that it brings, uh, to our city, we are a true melting pot.
I, I appreciate that, you can talk to your neighbors, and you can see someone at the grocery store and engage a conversation and talk to fifteen minutes and feel like you have a new friend, I enjoy the friendliness of our community.
Undoubtedly, the people are the best thing about Madison, Ma- Madison has a strong spirit that comes through, through our schools, through our people, through everyone you meet, it's just so friendly.
I think the best thing about Madison is that we have big town perks, but a small-town feel, you can really access everything that you want within five miles of here, there's so many cool businesses that are right in our backyard, but really, it's a small town at heart.
It's the community feel, it's the getting together, it's, it's the Madison Street Festival, I mean, it just is a great opportunity for everybody to come together and enjoy what the city brings to the families.
We had a petting zoo, we had, uh, children just performing, we had the senior center performing, but all those things are just family-oriented, it brings us together, it brings us, just brings us to the community, and it's a great event happening every year, that brings in so many people, and I think that's a gem.
I think our quality of life is really shown in our different greenways, uh, multi-use paths, trails, sporting events, or sporting locations, things like that, so, yes, I, I would say that we have a great quality of life.
The best thing about Madison is its people, our people get engaged at every facet of our city, they volunteer, they send their kids to our schools, they try to help us out in any way that they can to make this community better.
And I think the hidden gem that, that I always am so grateful for are our teachers, staff, and administrators, and, and, you know, they're a dedicated group of, of, of leaders who want the very best for our children, and so I, I just would have to say as superintendent, they're, they're, they're the gem.
And as we mature as a community, each of us continues to get roots that are a little deeper and a little deeper, the planting of those roots is what continues to make our city strong.
My family moved here in the early seventies when Madison was twenty-five-hundred to three-thousand people.
My family's roots in the city of Madison are me and my, my coworkers, um, you know, those are the roots that I'm building, and those are the relationships that I'm building, I'm not a native of Alabama, but I'm certainly learning to love it.
As an army brat, roots are hard to find, but they were so easy to plant here in Madison.
So, our family's roots in Madison are deep, as a former active-duty military family that moved all around the country, we were looking for somewhere that we could raise our family, plant roots, and stay for good, um, and not just for the duration of raising our kids, but we hope that our kids come back and raise their kids here after living...